Okay, we're on September 2nd, 2020. So it's 5:35 and roll call Craig Borba.
Here.
Melissa Cronin.
Present.
Juanita Garner is not on yet. David Kelly.
Here.
Ed McBride.
Here. Thank you. Um, change to the agenda guys at the end under number eight. I would just like to make an announcement around the committees. So we'll add that to the end of the agenda. Other than that, does anyone else have any thing they'd like to add to the agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda with the addition.
Second. Go ahead a second.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye.
I have to do roll call each time. Craig?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
My question is just briefly is, does that include the consent agenda? Because I wanted to ask whether or not on the consent agenda, whether or not Jeannie wanted to pull the library statistics from that so that it could be discussed further.
No, just to pull up the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So I would say, yeah.
Go ahead, David Kelly.
Thanks. Was I next for an?
Yes. Ed McBride.
All right. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
I see Kathy's trying to join us. That's good.
Excellent.
All right, so the consent agenda. So now trustee Kelly, this is where your question would apply. So do we, can I get a motion to accept or modify the consent agenda?
Well, my question for Jeannie was whether or not she wanted to pull it, so.
I can talk about it, certainly.
I'll move that we do approve for A of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Roll call.
Okay. Craig Borba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes. Library statistics.
Okay. So let me see if I can share a screen. One moment, let me find. Hi Kathy Wermick, thank you for joining us.
Hi Kathy.
Hi there.
So one thing you'll notice on the financials is that you have, I think you have three months worth of financials, which you can talk about, but it's the the wealth month, the 13th month, and then I think in the new month of New Year. So, okay, one moment. Let's share my screen. Here we go. All right, so we have statistics. So this is the June statistics, and as you know, the library was closed during the month of June. We were doing our library a go-go pickup service and our online services. And as you know, our circulation went down quite a bit, I mean 66% decrease. But I'm very proud of the, you know, the 7,000 items checked out. 5,200 of those were eBooks and downloadable. But that's still, still great. I'm glad that we're getting resources to customers. We did have some people using our Wi-Fi, but we're newly increasing the signal to get it to the parking lot here at the main library. So that, we want people to know about that. In June, I included the extras for things like database usage and our website hits. And, and so we had a lot of use on Canopy, which is our stream, one of our streaming programs, and Acorn TV, the other streaming program. Now you see New York Times Online. I'm so happy for that number. There's 1,022 people used it in, in the month of June. And that, the New York Times Online is provided from a grant from the California State Library. So we didn't pay for that, but we got it as a service from the state library, which is just really valuable. I use it. I'm very, very happy to promote that. Because a lot of times you'll see articles and you'll hit a paywall when you try to read a newspaper. And so we want people to have free access to newspapers. And they can't come in and use them here. So that's, that's that. Now on July, again, we had about the same usage. Our format has changed. So July is our new fiscal year and the California State Library requires us to report statistics to them. And they have added new categories. And so we've incorporated those categories into our spreadsheet. And you'll see at the bottom, we have virtual programming and live attendance. Now, live attendance isn't in-person. That's like a Facebook Live or an Instagram Live. I think they have Instagram Live. We're doing Facebook Live. And then on-demand viewing. And so we've added these new categories into our spreadsheet for you to see. And we're working, I'll tell you in my report some more about our programming. And then again, in our database usage for July, again, the heavy hitters are Canopy and Acorn TV. Acorn TV went up 921%. Even our homework help usage. So we pushed, we promoted our homework help and I'm glad to see that it got some hits. So we want to make sure that students know, students of all ages, even college students, can get help from live professional tutors through our Brainfuse program called Help Now. And so we want people, we don't, one, one session. But people came, came in and there are lots of resources and things that they can look at and get help with. So very happy to share that. Our downloadable, this is our webpage hits and obviously it's down, but we're still happy that people are accessing our website and seeing good numbers with that. So those are my statistics and I can answer questions if you have them. I can leave it up to if you want.
I have a question. The Wi-Fi to the parking lot, when do you think that'll be in place?
We got one, one signal booster hooked up and they were running some cable. I'm not sure if it, it might be up now, but it was supposed to be happening while I was on vacation. So we, we increased the signal from the children's room, the youth room, which is closest to the parking lot. And then we were putting one on the north end of the library, which is by the bus stop. And there's some shaded parking in that area. And that was the one that was taking a little bit of time because they have to run some cable. But I think if it's not in now, it will be in very soon.
Can you advertise that on Nextdoor and any other publications you send out?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's a great idea.
Tremendous help to the community.
Right.
Just out of curiosity, is the police department still continuing that van that's out in that parking lot?
It's not here. It hasn't been here for a couple of months. But we've, we've seen no extra activity. I don't, I think it's okay right now. We haven't had a real need for their, their mobile unit.
The reason why I was asking is because if you have people in the parking lot with laptops, that seems like a security concern.
Yeah, sure. Good point.
Oh, and my other question was also, it seems like the state has gotten into all those different forms of internet programming. I just don't understand what on-demand viewing is.
Oh, um, let me go back to that. So that means that if we load a video on YouTube or on Facebook, we can still track the number of views later. So it's not, it's not live. It's just that someone went to our YouTube channel or to our Facebook page and watched a video there.
Oh, I see.
Their definition of on-demand.
Were you surprised by these numbers? They seem kind of low.
We're just starting. On our face, our story time that we just had last Thursday, I saw the reach on it was something like 1,200 people. So these views are, they track one minute views. So if somebody just scrolls through and watches a snippet, we don't get, it doesn't count for us.
Is that the difference between 1,200 views and the 307 number there?
Yeah, probably. Yeah, they have to watch it at least 60 seconds. And when it jumps on and then pops right back off, it doesn't really count for us on this statistic.
Yeah, because I thought on YouTube that you had far more viewers than that.
Yeah, we, this was for July. And I think there, Lisa might know, there's some specific things that they asked. And well, I think it's because of the program and not just a loaded video. I'm not sure. Lisa, do you know?
Just watch it going forward, I guess.
On a similar note, I was wondering if it's possible to get statistics more generally related to the reach of the Facebook page. You know, given that it's a prime informational source for a lot of people, I would be interested to know month to month what the account reach was. And even just maybe once to start, not necessarily monthly, the demographics of people that follow the account in terms of age group and location, geographic location and things like that. Especially now as we're kind of moving to that platform to reach people. I think it's important to keep an eye on that.
That's a good suggestion. Yeah. And tracking these resources is all new to us because it's not something that we really followed closely before. But yeah, I'm marking, I'm writing this down and these are great ideas. And one thing, we, obviously we don't, we don't have a social media person. So we're all kind of just homespunning, you know? One person posts something and someone else is posting something and we're, we're trying, we're doing our best. And it's not real, we, we talk about how we, we need a strategy and we're trying to be strategic about it and trying to be mindful and do it regularly so that it's not just a little burst. But we're, we're working on that. And then thinking about Instagram too, you know, we have Instagram, we have Twitter. But we, basically I'm using Constant Contact now to try to cross-post so that it hits all three platforms. So besides just Facebook, we should gather the Twitter and Instagram as well if we can.
Yeah, I think in our, in the Cotella Valley, in the Cotella Valley, Facebook is really the big daddy of engagement and things like that. So that's, for me, that would be the most interesting. Instagram and Twitter maybe, but I'm sure those numbers are probably really low.
Yeah. And that's where I think our focus is right now too, is on Facebook. And then when we do a video, we, we do put it on YouTube so that people can access it as well.
Jeannie, how are the stats coming from the television commercial? What is, what's the TV station telling you?
I don't know. It's a good question. I can look into that. Because yeah, I should have, they should be getting, getting us some numbers soon, I would think.
Yeah, they, they want you to renew it and pay some money for it. They will.
Yeah. I'll see if they have anything.
It looks like they're, I mean, I see it in the mornings. I have to admit, I'm not seeing it in the afternoon. So they must be, they're kind of giving you the timeframe around GMA. And so they're, they are showing it. I mean, I see it pretty regularly, but I don't think I'm seeing it beyond that time. Some of you may have seen it beyond that time. I don't know.
I haven't been seeing it, but I would recommend also that you can post that video on the Facebook page for free and get, you know, continued eyes on it that way.
Yeah, good reminder. We have it on our YouTube, I think we have our YouTube channel. We posted it on the Facebook, but yeah, we can always post it again. It's, it doesn't hurt.
Appreciate it. Questions for Jeannie on the stats?
Good.
The best you can these times, it sounds like. Right? I'm going to mute.
I muted. We're learning a lot about, about video production. We got a Canva account, so we're, we didn't have it before. It's beautiful. It's fabulous. And then our Constant Contact account, which we've had for a long time, just didn't know what, what capability it had. It has a, has a social media scheduling platform. You can, you know, we think, we thought, oh, we need to buy food suite or whatever it is. We've got it. We already own the platform.
I mean, knowing the state library, it is, it's very telling. They're, they're going to start asking you to track these things because they know that it's going to be this way for a while, right? And they have to justify the federal funding that's coming, I'm sure, to you. I, I guess one more question for you is, as you're having your regional meetings with other directors or your state meetings with directors, I'm assuming that you're in a line with everybody else. And big or small, we're all, this, this kind of makes everyone equal in the user side because you can have 120 branches, but you can't open them, right? So I mean, it's, you're all on equal footings. Everyone doing the same thing in terms of putting, you know, their programming dollars where you are?
Yeah, the, the general consensus is that we all want grant funding for programs like Canva, video editing. Everybody's like, we need some video editing software. We need something. I'm, I'm doing it on my iPhone. I'm trying to make a little movie on my iPhone. Pretty good at it, but it's ridiculous.
Jeannie, with other businesses beginning to open now, have you got any direction from the council or David Ready regarding opening up the library for, at least for computer usage? So we can limit it?
Yeah, they, they should be discussing it at their next meeting, which is September 10th. I reached out to David Ready and the city attorney for guidance. They, this, the governor did include us libraries in the retail category and said that we could open at a 25% capacity. So we'll just wait for guidance from the council on doing that. And right now, we're still doing our, our pickup service and telephone service. We're getting a lot of reference, ask a librarian for suggestions.
The day I was there to sign the promissory note, I did it, of course, outside at the library of Go-Go. There was a customer standing there begging to use a computer. But I haven't had a computer since March and I already desperately need a computer. And this was what, just last month. So I think that the moment you do that, you're going to, they're going to be standing in line.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure what they, what level of service we'll open at, but I have a feeling, you know, computers would be one. And I hope it'll just be general browsing or, or if we'll do it in a staggered opening, like a computer use or maybe just a little bit of browsing.
Appointment.
Can you update the trustees when you get a decision from David Ready? Great, thank you.
Yeah, yes, I will.
I mean, this is kind of out of the box, but like, is there a possibility to have limited hours of just putting a laptop on the library, a go-go table up front and have somebody sit out there and let people use it for an hour or two, once a week or something like that?
It's, we've thought about it. There's a heavy concern of contamination and then also maybe theft. And it's really hot outside, so to have my employees sitting out there monitoring that, it would be really, really risky for them, I think, health-wise. Because it's just so brutal.
So you're expecting city council, that's on the same vein. When they come back, they're going to say, yes, you can open at 25% capacity. Are they going to tell you what you can do? Or are you prepared to tell them what you want to offer with that 25% capacity?
Not sure. We'll see. We can, we're prepared for any scenario. We're prepared for appointment-only computer use, which is what the last thing we had. We could modify that and have, our, our capacity is for normal times is 110 people. So 25% capacity is 27 people. And that includes the staff. So we're talking, we're talking 20 people in the building. So maybe 10 for computers and 10 for browsing, if that's a, if that's an option. Or maybe we have certain times for certain tasks, you know, like maybe we do our pickup service in the morning and then we do computers in the afternoon. Or, you know, we're, we're flexible. We can, we can adapt.
More to come on this. Can, going back to the statistics, we'll need someone to move that we accept the statistic as part of the consent. So we took them off and I get a motion.
I'll move that we accept the statistics.
And can I get a second?
Seconded.
Roll call, please.
Craig Borba?
Yes.
Melissa Cronin?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Ed McBride?
Yes. All right, so moving to our next item. Jeannie, are you doing the Friends report?
The Friends have not had a meeting. And they are meeting next week on, on the 8th at 2:00 PM for their first meeting since the summer break. I know that they have been doing online book sales of some of their more valuable items, but pretty much it's been very quiet.
I forgot about that, sorry.
Okay.
But they've also been working with you as far as getting the, the summer program done. So there wasn't anything new to report since our last meeting about the summer reading program?
I'll give that report during my, my time, just a minute.
Okay, great.
Sidley, Palm Springs Public Library Foundation.
Okay, since the last meeting we have met, we did, we did not take a summer break. We did make our $10,000 payment on the loan as promised and signed the new promissory note. To date, we have, or since the last meeting, we have one new member and we currently have three members in line to be for a second interview and then hopefully all of them will want to join the board. Our finance and investment committee has, has identified a fund as a starting place for our endowment. Excuse me. And we are in the process of liquidating that, the annuity. We're just kind of waiting for the check to arrive. And we did form a new public relations committee to identify a new PR and marketing firm because of a conflict with one of your new members, although I'm very excited to see her here. And we, we've received, we have also raised almost $4,000 in the last few weeks from member donations, which is very exciting. And I would like to invite all of you and encourage you, if you haven't, to make a donation to the foundation. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for David?
I just wanted to add that I checked the, the trust fund and the $10,000 was recorded.
Thank you.
So David, I guess my question or clarification, in, in our packet, we have a document here is the statement of direction for the establishment of the endowment fund. That has been approved by the board, correct?
Yes.
Was there anything else about that document that we, we needed to discuss or talk about?
No.
Questions about it? For David?
That was a no. There's nothing more to discuss about that document that's part of the packet?
I think David's done his report. Do you have a question or do you have something you'd like to say?
I don't know. Maybe you're not hearing my question. I don't know if my audio is coming in through well. But my question was, was there anything to add to the, what was presented in the packet as far as the endowment was concerned? And I do, and I believe Mr. Sidley answered no.
Yeah, I do not have anything to add to that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to clarify that. Thanks.
Looks like you guys accomplished quite a bit in the last, since the last time we met. So thank you, David.
Thank you.
I'm looking to hear.
Thank you all for your support.
Library staff report.
Okay, so speaking of summer reading, we had a total of 828 people participate in our online summer reading program, our first virtual program. So we were happy about that. 447 of those were youth, 197 were teen and 184 were adults. Usually our adult number, well, last year, our adult number was a lot higher because when the children came in to sign up, we signed up the parent. So this year, we didn't have that opportunity. But we had, we, we tracked the reading this year. This was so unique this year. We normally just let, we just want people to just come to the library and we want them to participate. This year, we, we really pushed the reading aspect and we said, we want you to read 400 minutes in six weeks. So we had 207 participants complete that goal. And so that's about 25% completion. And, and that's about average, what we get every year. They read 227,000 minutes, 227,164 minutes, which equals 3,786 hours of reading. So that is terrific. We did a little competition. The Friends of the Library sponsored a competition with the Palm Springs Unified School District. And Catherine Finchey Elementary students read most out of all of the schools in Palm Springs. And so the Friends have a check for them for $500 to go to their school library. And you've got to get that to them. And, and then they'll have that to tell by books. And part of summer reading, we got a grant from the Anderson Children's Foundation to buy books. And every person, every youth and teen, teen that completed the summer reading program got a pack of five new books for their very own to keep. And each person, when they signed up for summer reading, got, got a book. So our goal is to give out books and that is a lot of fun. And we thank the Anderson Children's Foundation for their grant to support the purchase of the books. And the Friends of the Library sponsored the summer reading program and it all, yeah, it all worked out and it was really great. The one thing that we're doing, we have, the program that we use is called Beanstack. And so once you're enrolled, you can go participate in other reading, reading competitions or tracking systems. And so one thing that we're doing right now is called 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. And so we know that when children read, they do better in school. And so to get off to a good start, the goal is to have them read 1,000 books before kindergarten. So if they read a book every night before bed, you know, 365 days in a year, times five years, give or take, it's about 1,500 books. So, you know, they can do it. And it can be the same book over and over and still counts as, as a separate book because of exposure. And so we have a program called 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten. You can access our website, go to palm springslibrary.org to sign up. And we can help you track your reading and then you earn badges along the way. And then if you get to a certain level, we, normally we'd give you a party. So I'm not sure what the price is right now, but I don't think it's a party. But we have a program for that. We're doing pickup service at the library, like curbside, but it's tableside. Right at the front door, you make an appointment to pick up your items. In June, we had 1,068 appointments. In July, we had 1,164 appointments. And in August, usually it kind of slows down in August, but we still had 1,046 appointments for pickup service. And people are very happy. I got a really nice email from a gentleman who got a little joke. We've been putting jokes in the, in the bag so that, you know, they know that we're humans and we like to have fun. And, and so he sent us an email and said he really appreciated the joke and it was, they're just so corny. They're library, they're library dad jokes. Like, let's see, what is, what do you call a nervous javelin thrower? Shakespeare. Exactly. They're groaners. They're so bad. Yeah, we've done, I, this is the second month I've published the monthly newsletter on Constant Contact. So if you are not, if you're not getting our newsletter, you should sign up. Just again, go to our website and there's a link in the, on the webpage to sign up to join. And there's a link in the, on the webpage to sign up to join, to get our monthly newsletter. Tells you all about our events. We are starting virtual programming. We have been doing weekly storytimes on Facebook Live. And then whenever possible, we've been loading those onto YouTube. And so you can go back and look at them. We have, the teens have been playing Animal Crossing on the Nintendo Switch. And you can join in on our library island. And visit and do things, I don't know. And then we developed a new program coming this month, it's called Craft Along. We're going to do a demonstration video and then you can pick up the craft supplies and make the craft at home. So this month, we're doing maracas, they're made with Easter eggs and plastic spoons and washi tape and little rice or beans popcorn inside of it. So while supplies last, after the video, you can come in and pick up at our tableside. And then we've got another program, Sharon's gonna make caramel popcorn in a bag. And so we're just developing different programs for different age groups. The teens are going to have a virtual escape room and they can win prizes. And then we're doing our book clubs, lots of book clubs on Zoom. And then we, one thing we're doing is unboxing videos. So when we get a new, a box of new books or DVDs or whatever, we are making a video of us opening it so that you can see the new items. It's kind of a way to browse, having to come in. And we just want to show everybody what we're getting because it's so exciting to us to get new stuff. Behind the scenes, we're working on catalog cleanup, relabeling books. We're streamlining our collections, trying to clean up and make this place just wonderful. We have been ordering books, they are delayed because of the social distancing at the factories, the warehouses. So there's been some delays, we're just getting our April orders. It's really taking a long time. And then, like I said, we've developed a new form called Ask a Librarian. So if you don't know what you want, but you kind of like this author or you like these movies or this musical artist, just submit the form and we'll find stuff for you that we think you'll like. And it's kind of a surprise me thing for people who like that, that, you know, the assistance from a librarian or the browsing experience, you've been missing the browsing experience, we'll browse for you. And I think that's all I have right now, unless you have questions. And you're muted.
Kind of like a reader's advisory, except it's done online, right?
Exactly, that's exactly what it is, the form is extensive, so go look at it.
Like a reference question, right, back in the old days.
Oh, yeah.
It could be fun to do as a Facebook post too, to encourage, you know, bring it to the readers and the followers on the page, to encourage engagement and say, somebody requested this, if you've read them, what do you like? And they'll comment and spread it that way.
That's a good idea, too. Some librarians say that the biggest engagement they get is not when they ask what you like, but what you hate. Tell me a book you hate and then 800 comments later. We're passionate about that.
Know what we don't like.
Right.
I have a question. Jeannie, before you left on vacation, you sent us an email on August 19th regarding some questions regarding Resolution 17288 and whether or not that was the last resolution defining the library trustee responsibilities?
Yes, I got an answer.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I just.
I didn't, my question was, is this the right time to discuss it? Or are we supposed to be discussing it somewhere else on the agenda?
I don't, I didn't put it anywhere in the agenda, so let me just tell you about, I asked the question, is that Resolution 17288 the last resolution? And they said, after doing research, this is from John Paul, the Chief Deputy City Clerk. After doing research, I believe that is the last resolution regarding that. And then, did I send you, I think I sent you what a current resolution looks like when the budgets, when they approve the budget, it's just the full budget book and then just a.
Yeah, are we going to discuss that tonight? Or is that another agenda item somewhere else? Because there's a couple of pages actually I'd like to point out on there.
And I didn't have it on the agenda. What do you, how do you want to handle that?
We probably then should add it to the agenda for next time.
Yeah, that would be fine, if we could put that there and then have, and Jeannie, if you could actually be prepared to put the report up on the screen because then I can go to a, I can ask you to go to a couple of pages on it.
You mean that?
And then, and then also, at that time, we might want to initiate a continued discussion about the question to begin with, which was what to do about the library endowment still sitting at the city?
So trustee Kelly, may I ask a question? Is there anything in your comments that might require a response from the city that Jeannie could go ahead and work on for the discussion? Is there anything that you might have as a result from what she's sent us before?
Well, I think she's answered our prior questions, so the only thing I can think of is a discussion that would raise new questions.
Okay. I'm just thinking ahead, if there's things that she can work on before the meeting, since she's already provided us, I think it's okay for us to ask you questions to have a response to that email, correct? Jeannie, that you could respond to in our.
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, I can.
Well, I mean, if we want to do that, then I would ask her to pull up that report because that was part of that email.
Well, then that's, I mean, my intention is not to get into it, it's just that I was trying to think ahead that if there's things that she could work on that would help that discussion, let's, you know, send it to her so that she can have a response ready. But if you don't think so, then we can just wait until you have it.
I don't think there's anything urgent about my discussion, but I think it ought to be discussed.
Okay, I made enough.
Jeannie, could you confirm that everything I would need to discuss that is in the earlier packets? Because I do have Resolution 24776 from you in email, but I don't have Resolution 17288 in email.
Okay, I'll make sure that's a part of the packet.
Okay, thank you.
And make sure you have it.
Any other questions for Jeannie on her report?
Thank you.
All right, trustee Kelly, treasurer's report.
Okay, so Jeannie, could you actually pull up the packet and go to page 20?
Yes, just a moment. There we go. Okay.
Okay, so this is the one that shows our cash balance and not able to read this little teeny tiny print from the screen.
Does that help? Did I zoom in for you?
Yeah, well, actually I wrote it down, so it should be saying $1,929,380.18 is our balance. One of the things that I, we had discussed before and looking forward to doing this would be to provide the trustees with an annual report when we close out the books for the year. And that's something I'll be working on for the, before the next meeting. I don't know if I'll have it finished for the October meeting, but I hope to. And then we can have a discussion about that at that time. But I'll make sure if it's, if it's in good shipshape order, that Jeannie is able to put it in the packet. And that concludes my treasurer's report.
And can I just add to that, where you see this line 12418, where it says notes receivable 90, that's where I just, I just checked today and that is, has been reduced.
My question, thank you. Thank you. Questions for our treasurer, trustee Kelly?
I'm so good with this video thing, I didn't even realize that I took out my video.
We know where to find you. Thank you. So the next, the next part of the agenda is always a very bittersweet thing because it's when you say goodbye to people who have provided really great service to the city and to the library. And in the case of the two that we're honoring, there she is. She knew I was talking about her. First of all, I had the pleasure of coming on to the board, thanks to trustee Courtwright. I've known Harry for a long time and when I, we moved to Palm Springs full-time, he encouraged me because of my background and my love for libraries to apply. So I've kind of been a pain in Jeannie's side for quite some time because of, and will blame Harry since he's not here. But for those of you know, Harry loved libraries, he retired from one of the largest libraries in the country. And I think that we all benefited from the time that he served. So I want to go on record for thanking him and we actually have a certificate that we'll send to him or drive by and knock on the door and leave it real quickly. The other thing that I would, I want.
We'll mail it.
The other person I want to honor is my neighbor. I probably can see her if I live really hard enough across the road here. I've known Kathy since Todd and I moved, of course, to Ascena. And if there's one person in this city who gives her time, her love, her everything to making this a better place to live, it is Kathy. And she is so well-known, so well-respected. We were very honored to have her, the time we had on the Public Library Board of Trustees. And I want you to know that because your input, your thoughts, what you contributed is immeasurable. And I know you're not going away, you'll always be there, as you are tonight, for another reason. But I want to thank you for your work on the library and more importantly, thank your work on the planning commission again. So I know they're glad to have you and we're all glad you're there, so thank you. And we have a certificate for you, right? I've appreciated.
Here is what it looks like.
Among many that you probably have a wall full of them, but we hope you'll take this one. We hope your time with us was as special, so we thank you for your work. So I'll let anyone else who wants to say anything for, to Kathy.
I appreciate that you're in, Kathy, and I am so glad that you're going to continue working with the city and the planning commission. They need your ideas and insights, thank you.
You know, I so much appreciated Kathy being on, she is a lion of the city. And it was a pleasure to work alongside of her and Harry too. I didn't get to work with him for very long either, but he's definitely passionate about libraries and I think any board of trustees that has people as passionate about libraries as Harry is, is well-served, so thank you both.
Thank you.
Kathy, thank you, I know we didn't work together very long, but on behalf of the foundation, thank you very much.
It was a real pleasure to work with all of you, get to know you. I'm passionate about the library and seeing the library in a slightly longer time period get remodeled or rebuilt. I'm still with you on that, I'm very, very passionate about seeing that happen. It was a great pleasure to work with each of you, it was very different than being on a planning commission and therefore incredibly special. And I want to thank all of you and I'm sorry I didn't get to say goodbye to Harry because I really loved working with him too.
We're gonna miss you. But you're not going anywhere right now, you're gonna stay for another agenda item, right? So you're not going.
Yes, yes. Well, I want to say thank you too, thank you Kathy. You have, you are the cheerleader of the city and your enthusiasm gets things done. Thank you very much.
Amen. While you're not going very far, I know where you live. And one of the things that, as I said, makes this very bittersweet is you might say goodbye to friends and colleagues, but we get to say hello to some new people that I can tell you based on what I saw in the interviews and what I know of these individuals. And having had the opportunity to work with Juanita on the building committee, I'm just so excited about our new members and our new trustees and what they're bringing to the table and what they're going to bring to our group and making us stronger. So Melissa, do you mind just telling us a little bit about yourself and your background? And more importantly, why you picked us, because you did pick us and why libraries are special?
Yeah, so obviously I love libraries, like all of you guys. From a very young age, probably my favorite place in the entire world, even when I moved here to Palm Springs. I studied history and literature at Harvard and then I worked for 10 years in publishing in New York City, magazines and books, and I still write and ghostwrite books to this day. And then I also own and work at a marketing agency, Bose Factory, here in the city. So my background is very much on the content creation side and promotion and digital innovation, all things that I'm excited to discuss and see implemented at the library. I'm just really, I'm really thrilled about the opportunity to learn more about and contribute to what an organization that is already very strong and treasured in our city and see it continue to grow and be a strong force in our community in the future, moving forward. And I'm also really honored to serve alongside all of you because I know all of your passion and your background and experience is going to be a great learning opportunity for me also. So just really thrilled to be here, grateful for the opportunity and looking forward to contributing in any way that I can.
Thank you. Thank you, glad you're here.
Thank you. Me too.
So on 7C, I've asked Kathy to come because we have 7C on here because once again Kathy and I had taught and Kathy just would not let go and let something die that we had worked so hard for. And I've asked her to share with us a conversation that she had with the mayor, and she can tell you more. But more importantly, about keeping alive our planning for a new facility for the citizens and for the library. And so Kathy, do you mind just kind of giving us some background as to why we have this discussion on the agenda for the planning for the building?
Sure, the I've, I had felt that not continuing with the planning when we went dark on our on the money that had been promised for planning, architecture and eventually a new library, that we would be much further behind if we didn't continue the planning piece of this. And I had a conversation with Jeff Kors, which I talked with Ed about, and then followed it up with a conversation with every other member of the city council to see if they would be supportive of our group continuing the planning effort for the new library. And what I got back was they didn't have the money, but the contract was in place. And it could be signed if we were willing to pay for that planning piece and at some point also pay for some of the design piece that would have involved the park and the library. Ed and I met with our consultants, I think they gave us a new contract. But the idea was that at some point, the pandemic will end. The urgency will not, where all of the funds that came from Measure J got folded back into supporting city staff, that won't have to happen in the future. And if we have a plan as to what we want to do, we'll be in a much better place to move forward with it. I also thought that it would be possible, not just for the. Um, I also thought that it would be possible, not just for the, the trustees, but also possibly the friends and the foundation to work on this effort together. I'm not sure how, you know, I'm not sure what the other two groups would do. But it seemed to me that it would be a good use of the money that we're holding, that we continue the planning effort. So is that, Ed, does that cover it?
So with that conversation, Jeanie had a conversation with Marcus from the perspective, and why don't you share with us that conversation? And I'll share what I hear.
Something's really staticky. So I spoke with Marcus Fuller and that's what you're talking about, right? Just his opinion and his opinion was very positive. Just go for it and that would be great for the city. If, if we proceeded and had the plan ready, just like Kathy said, if we had the plan ready, then it's just basically what Kathy said, that if the pandemic is going to end at some point and if we're ready to go, then that would be a good thing. That's basically it.
So with, with that.
Sure.
And his question is directed to Kathy. Because Kathy, I know you worked on the building committee during that summer last year. And one of the things I recall that you asked for before the commit, before that building committee app started was a review of all the prior plans that had been made for the library in the past. And there were a number that actually had a lot of specifics about architecture and, and planning about where things were going to be. And a similar fiscal emergency happened at the time that put those plans in the file cabinet. And I wonder what you think is the difference between what was presented then to your building committee at that time, especially given the economic circumstances that we have now?
One of the things that I think that happened was people stopped. So that when things came back, there wasn't a plan in place and there wasn't a group working on it.
So that plan that was, that was already in the file cabinet wouldn't have qualified as a plan that was in place?
You know, I wasn't here for that piece of the planning, this piece of the planning that we're talking about. And there are two pieces is what do we need for the library? What do we need for a library in this, in this era? I, I do think, and I can't, can't speak to the older plans, but I do think that the world of libraries has changed in the last 10 years or 15 years since that plan was there. And that we're looking at both a more digital world and we're also, and one that's more focused on electronic infrastructure, which we don't have in our current library. And also one with more, more need for spaces for people to meet and to make things and work on things together. So.
Don't get me wrong. It's not that I was proposing that a plan that was done 20 years ago would be applicable today. My point is that once the economy turned around the last time and there was a plan that was in the file cabinet, it wasn't implemented. So I'm wondering, why wouldn't that happen again this time?
I think things only get implemented if you've got a group pushing them. I mean, we, we just saw that the downtown park is being finished. There were people pushing it. There are people pushing right now to do the bathrooms and upgrades in the parks. Part of the reason I think the mayor wants to see this done is he wants the site plan for the park as well to make some plans for what happens to the park that the library will be located in. So without, without having that in place, there is, you know, assuming there's a group, and at this point we do have the foundation and we have the friends. If we have people that are working on making this happen, we've got a much better chance of seeing it move forward. Otherwise, for me, it would, you know, when I went, my very first meeting with this group was actually going to that strategic or study session on the library, which I think had 150 people at it. And one of the questions that I heard at that was people getting excited, but not being sure they should be excited because they've had so many stops and starts. And and I think just stopping. That's, at least that's me. It's just stopping isn't the best way to see us get a library that we need in Palm Springs. We have to still keep pushing for it. We have to know what we need. And we have to have a plan in place. And this isn't, this isn't the architecture. This isn't spending however many millions of dollars on architecture. This is a plan for what we actually need for space and facilities.
And I know you and I both shared this opinion, correct me if I'm wrong, back when we were doing planning and, and I was making the case for using Measure J funds to do it. And it seemed as if probably before both of us were on the trustees, that it seemed as if there was in place a, a commitment by the Measure J people to pay for consulting fees that were already spent. And we were never reimbursed for those monies. And in, in miraculously, Measure J finds money for the completion of a downtown park and we're still left holding the bag. I'm, I'm just wondering your thoughts about that.
The downtown park was in construction. That's really different. The city, and that's still contentious, but the city would have lost the money it had put into the downtown park if it stopped it. In that it would have been more expensive to pick it up and build it later. And they would have done something interim that they would have then had to pull out. So the, the difference in costs going forward was about a million dollars and money came back into Measure J. And we're, you know, we don't know exactly how things are going to turn out, but we have seen more of a tourist industry than was anticipated when the city pared back its budget. But city pared back its budget and then found, I believe, an additional $11 million, three of which was in Measure J, and that was used to finish the park. So it was I, I think everything else has been left high and dry. I think that's true. But if we're not working on it, the next parcels of money will not go, you know, the library will fall off a cliff in terms of the items that the city needs.
Kathy, could I ask?
Didn't Measure J make a commitment to pay for this?
Pardon? Measure J, Measure J had agreed to pay for this. What they did and they, we had, they'd agreed to pay for this and they'd also put aside, they'd set aside about five million for us last year, but we weren't ready. So they set aside, I think, a million and a half. Am I right, Ed?
Correct.
In addition, when the city, when the COVID crisis happened, the city ended up with a projected $70 million deficit. They cut some staff. They did what they're allowed to do under Measure J, which is to recapture all of the funds that weren't committed. Where contracts hadn't been, and they stopped signing contracts. And they pulled all that money back into the budget so that they could maintain, and they used most of the city's reserved, except I think $11 million. And their, what they said was that the first money they got into Measure J would go into the park or parks. Then it went into rebuilding the park, but we don't know how quick, so the money that was allocated to us is gone. And the money that was allocated to the parks and to the streets and, you know, any of the other capital projects the city was working on is gone right now. So that money isn't available for us to use if we went forward with the study.
Kathy, could I ask a question about that? I know at the city council meeting where they were discussing how to move forward with the park, the assistant city manager mentioned that they anticipated an additional, at least an additional $3 million in Measure J funding to come in at the end of the last fiscal year as they were closing up the year. Do you know if that came in or if that's also been allocated to the park?
The money on that, that money was allocated to the park at that meeting. And the park had been in the budget until the meeting before that. And then they wanted to keep enough money in the reserves to keep their bond rating up. So that money was allocated. There is, there is additional money that is general fund money as opposed to Measure J money that they anticipated coming into the city, which was about $8 million. It's not clear to me that they would take that money, the general fund money, and begin to work on other, other issues. But that's up to city council and whatever they do, there are a lot of loud voices as to how it could be used. Including rehiring the staff that's been laid off.
I guess on the other side of the issue, if we were to move forward with paying for it all ourselves, is there at this point the option to carve out pieces of the contract? How, how defined is it? Even though it's not signed, could we say, you know, have the library manage the survey aspect and break off a piece that way? Is there still wiggle room in terms of, of the contract pricing?
Ed might want to talk a little bit more about that because you were involved in the discussions with the consultant after I was, I believe, Ed.
Yes. So I've had two conversations or multiple conversations with two different groups. I've had a conversation with Dr. Reddy about this. Jean, I met with him and I, my immediate reaction was, of course, I had questions and some concerns. For example, you know, would there, what would happen if we funded this and we, I hate to use this term, but we kicked the can further down the road. And we're, the next, the next logical step for us would be to have a plan, hire an architect to then take that plan and develop it into, as, as trustee Kelly mentioned, previous plans had been done based on, on programs. So we would hire an architect to then start identifying what a new facility would need to look like to accommodate that program. And response to me was not quite what I was expecting, but was encouraging. So he said, you know, the library is still a very high priority for everyone at the city. So city council is very much aware that we, we had to pull this money, but it is still top of our list. And we, he says, we think, and I think that if we, if you guys could take this project to the next step, when the money starts coming back, the library is top of the list. And so that was encouraging to hear because I said, if we take money that we want to use for other things and we spend it for this, if we should approve this, you know, that we want to know that. And then I went to the consultants and I said, so this next phase, what, what does it look like and what, what will we have to do to modify it under COVID-19 restrictions? Because when it was originally proposed, we were, they were going to hire someone here locally to coordinate multiple town hall meetings, pull focus groups together, you know, have these conversations, look at these plans. And he thought, so it was really going to the community and asking community input. Can't do that anymore, right? So they went through their proposal and made it COVID-19 compliant. So there still is someone they will hire to coordinate all of the work, but it will really be a technology-based next phase where there will be lots of meetings and lots of input. And the, the price did not change based on that. I think, right? Jeanie, I, I don't think it changed at all from the, what was ready to be signed to where it is now.
I'm looking in your packet.
So my, my thoughts tonight were that I, I wanted to introduce this. I'm not, I'm not prepared to ask for a vote. I, I'm sure like me, you, all of you have a reaction. You have questions and you need more information before you would decide to spend this money. So I'm not asking for a vote tonight. All I'm asking is that we've introduced it. I think that now's the time for us to gather these questions, either for the consultants or for the city. And take those questions back, get our answers and then have a discussion about, is this something that we are interested in funding? So please understand it's not tonight till we pull the checkbook out. It really is more of these kind of conversations we're having right now. And I will gather them and take them to, to the city and get answers for us as best I can. So I hope I answered your question. That was probably a lot more than what you had asked, Melissa, but I hope that was, that was what you were looking.
No, that's, that's very helpful. And I think if the contract indeed came in at the same price, that's certainly something that I would want to go back and speak with the contractors about because having read the proposal in the packet, which I assume is the post-COVID version.
That's correct.
It seems substantially pared down from an in-person campaign. And as somebody who does that work, it is very kind of low-touch and you know, doing that digitally, there's a huge difference of time and resources to execute. So it should be reflected in what we're paying for sure.
Right. That's, that's great input.
So Ed, are you collecting questions now?
Yeah. What I, what I, I thought we could do, if it's okay with you all, is since we've introduced this officially, we, we have Kathy here. We posed the questions as to why it's here in front of us. I thought that we could, I could start taking your questions either through email. I could definitely take questions now. But we could gather these questions and then I could do a follow-up report at our meeting in October and review those things. I assume that's, that's okay with any kind of rules and regulations, Jeanie, that we do it that way or is there? What, what do you suggest? I want to make sure we're following.
You can send your questions to me and I can forward it to everyone.
And then I think this is something that you guys who have been around and went through the, the building process with us. I just want to make sure that anyone who sees it on the agenda, a member of the public that was so passionate about the building that they may want to appear and talk to us about it and have questions as well. So it's not something that I'm, I want to be quick to make a decision about. I want to make sure that we made the right decision to spend our money. And I can, I'll stop there if anybody has any questions.
Kathy, I thought one of the reasons that things slowed down is that the city wanted to address the whole park area before we proceeded forward.
That's a piece of this. That's a piece of this. When I talked to Marcus, he said that this piece of the study came first. And then we began to work and he hadn't finalized the contract with the space planners for the park. But that we first, we needed to have a sense of what we needed and then to bring the park people in. And Ed, I think you've talked with them as well, haven't you? And that came from the building committee. It came from a sense that if we just either built a new building on this site or just remodeled the library without thinking about the park and the uses that we're located in, that it would probably fail.
So the consultants concur with that. The consultants feel like that in, in the, the impact they're seeing nationally on libraries and the changes. Let me, let me use an example. Most of you may recall, we looked and talked about the. Most of you may recall, we looked and talked about the new main library being built in Riverside. And the fact that that building is almost done, right, Jeanie? It's getting pretty close to being finished. Beautiful buildings. As a matter of fact, it was one that we talked about, wouldn't it be wonderful to have a building like this for Palm Springs? The building was designed with no stairs to get into the building. Only elevator accessible to a second floor. In a post-COVID environment, that's the worst, right? I mean, you, you just don't pack people into an elevator to take them into a building. So the consultants said, that's just one example of the things they're seeing that are impacting construction and capital building programs. You know, that's in the planning process. So in, in this, the consultants would like to focus on the current real estate and footprint that we own. By the way, we own three buildings, or the city does, but the library has control of three buildings. Wellwood, the main library, and the tri-building next door. That's, that's all part of our footprint. And so they, they feel strongly that it's time to, to look at that as, here's what we've got. And in this post-COVID world, could, do we really need to build annexes or additions or whole new buildings? Could we make the existing facilities through a, an update or remodel work? One of the questions. So this particular part of the, the next program would identify that. Of course, if we need more space, the park plan is definitely has to be consulted because we're asking for more land that the park would, the park study would have to take into account. So this is really just that next phase and are we, are we willing to keep it moving and pay for it?
I know we're getting close to the end of our time, but I, I had one thing that I wanted to, to suggest. That one thing I learned from the process that we went through last summer was that public opinion really does count here. And and as much as I was surprised as, because I was more of a supporter for a downtown location for this, a new library. I have to honor the public's opinion about wanting to renovate the existing space and work within the Sunrise Spot. Which is one of the reasons why I'm so surprised the city made its move to actually continue the funding of the downtown park and not pare it down. But given as that is May, I think this is an opportunity to actually look towards creating a more public opinion than we ordinarily get at these meetings here. And I don't know if you're willing to do this, Ed. It seems like this would be a great thing for the president of the trustees to do. But if you made your case for the library going forward and put in a piece of it regarding this use of a consultant to come up with strategies and had that as an op-ed piece for the Desert Sun, that actually would generate some public opinion. And something that perhaps once public opinion is actually generated, maybe to get it back on the city council's agenda for some more public opinion, I think that would help our case a lot more.
Great question. Great, great comment, too.
Ed, I also had a concern. When I did their budget, I came up with $130,000 exposure. And they're saying it's not to exceed 90,000. But when I added up all their figures, I came up with 130,000.
And by the way, I can invite the consultants to be at our next meeting to address some of these questions so that I'm not just a conduit. So you can have Sue or be with us and, you know, things like, can you review the, the budget with us? And how you came up with your figures is a great way for her to go through those numbers and, and to review those with us.
I'm just concerned that we'd all of a sudden start, you know, starting a tab with her then.
I'm sorry. I, I lost you.
I, I'm just concerned that we would be starting a tab with her, that we'd all of a sudden be incurring expenses for her time.
No.
And, and, and I think his question is probably a little bit more straightforward than meeting her presence at the meeting.
No, the work that they've put into this so far to help refine this, there's been no charge for that. So the only way they would move forward is if we agreed to accept this contract. That's when we would start paying them. But to this point is to, to help us make the decision. So they've been committed to that.
Can, can I just add the?
We lost you, Jeanie.
Lost you.
All right. I was unmuted and then I muted. Read my lips. Packet, page 37, where it's amendment number three. That document is just the, the original document that we had sent to city council back in February. So the total, not to exceed on that, is $189,500. So the new revision would be a $90,000 project. But we don't know what their new charges would be instead of the 90. If it would just still be 90 or if it would be more or less. But this is the old agreement. This one was never signed. I have it in my, I have it. So we, we never executed that contract, but we would do an, do a new revision because the tasks are going to change. So I'm sure, I don't know. I didn't see anything new, Ed. Did you about the price? I remember, I remember she talked about the scope changing, but I didn't know about the price.
I think that she was waiting to hear back from us on, you know, our conversation tonight. And what were the questions we even have specifically to then to, to kind of come up with a final draft of what the agreement would be.
Because I, I know she mentioned travel. Obviously, travel wouldn't be happening like it was in the past. So there wouldn't be those airfare and hotel expenses.
And I think they've identified a local person that would be their onsite person to help them coordinate and kind of be, who lives here. So I know they've been looking for someone, so they may have found someone.
Was that under the title of project manager?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay.
I just felt like the, the original proposal that was about to be signed had that person here really doing all the coordinating and meetings, finding places to meet, you know, you know, all that goes into pulling people together and having an onsite meeting. So they scaled that back to someone who could help with the technology, coordinating, Zoom meeting, making sure that the technology works. And so all those things were put into that update from what I understand from Sue. So, so if I could, if I could ask each of you to put your thoughts down, send them to, to me, or I'm sorry, to Jeanie. We'll, we'll create a central document that I'll share with everyone so that if you see someone else's question, you go, oh, I wish I'd have thought about something else. And give everybody a little time to finalize their questions and then we'll start working on those answers for a presentation for October. And if we need more time, we need more time. And this is a lot of money for us to spend. So once again, I want to make sure we understand that it's really for us to feel this is the right thing for us to do. So it's okay.
Ed, when we had talked, we also talked about inviting the Friends and the Foundation to join us in this. For Melissa, the Friends have significant money. And this might be something that the Foundation could begin to fundraise around. And so it wasn't thought of as just us, although it could be just the trustees. But one question, and I'm not sure how you want to do that, but I do think both of those groups may have questions and they may want to be involved.
But it's very customary and for libraries when they're in this phase, especially if you have a foundation, is look at the foundation and say, we're going to add this to the tab that we want you to go out and raise this money to, and in our case, replace this funds into the trust fund. So if we spend $90,000, we could ask the Foundation and Friends to please help raise the money to replace that money for the future. That's, that's very common in capital programs to have planning paid for by your support organizations. It's just that we, we didn't continue that, if you guys will recall, is because we're sitting there at midnight one night when city council said, we're, we're going to use Measure J for this because it's time and here's some money for the future. And we walked out of that meeting so excited because there was money coming our way. So we, we just didn't really explore that as an option. But it's definitely a question that we should have on our list and discuss with our partners, the Friends and the Foundation. I agree.
David, I have a question for you. Did you state earlier that the money that we spent on the first phase was not, we were not reimbursed by Measure J?
Yeah, you were correct in hearing what I said.
That's correct. We asked for it. Well, we did send a formal request over to the city and asked them to, I think it was, Jeanie, help me remember. I'm sorry. Was it 35,000, 45, something like that? That was for the first phase that we paid for, for library strategies. Is that right?
The first phase of this was 37,000, according to this, the amendment.
That sounds to me like it still should be a reimbursable cost.
Well, we were turned down flat. No. They would not do it. So I don't know about that now, but there's no.
Measure J turned us down or?
That's correct. Yeah, done. And said no. So that, but that's when they felt like, okay, but we're going to give you the rest of this money. If you remember, there was $600,000 that was, that we'd been sitting on for Measure J for quite some time and had not spent. They finally came and said, look, we need you guys to spend this money and we had a plan to spend it. And so they then said, here's, we ended up on number three of the priority list, if I remember that. I can see it now. Of Measure J projects behind parks. The library was, you know, high on the list. And so that was our, we're going to do this for you instead is the way I interpreted it. That's my interpretation. But no, we were turned down for the reimbursement.
It just seems we should go to Dr. Reddy and also ask since we spent that in good faith.
Actually, I think he's the one that said no, but.
My recollection exactly.
Really?
Yes.
Well, that's a lesson that we've learned now, that anybody's going to promise us money, we need to spend quickly and make sure they give it to us.
That's one way of looking at it, guys. I mean, if we're going to spend this money, then we understand this money is going out of the trust fund to continue this project for this next phase of the project. And the best we can hope for is that our foundation or our friends can help us recover some of that money, if not all of it, and put it back in the trust fund.
But this is also a reason why when I hear the city in the form of the people you've spoken to at this point, say that they are behind us. I question that because, and I would actually make it a condition going forward with this proposal that you're making at this point, that we find some checkpoints along the way where we get input from the city to say, are we on the right track? Is this something you still support so that we don't go down a blind alley?
Well, and I think I understand that point and I, I don't disagree. I would say that I would expect the city to be as involved in this contract and this process they would if they were paying for it. Right, Jeanie? I mean, because it's still, it's really a, it's a city contract that we happen to be funding with trust fund money, correct?
Absolutely. Yes.
All right. So thank you guys for the discussion. I think it's, it's an opportunity. Are we ready to take on this opportunity? I, I was flooded with questions like you all are, so I think it's time for us to put our questions down to see if we find the answers ourselves within this group. And what questions can we take beyond for other people to give us assurances or to tell us what they think. So Jeanie will gather this for you. Thank you.
Jeanie, we can send an email, then we can reply to your email.
Yes, I'll do that. It's a good idea.
Ed, before you go on to the next issue, I have to leave. You'll let me know if you want me to stay involved in any way. It's, that's really up to you guys.
Thank you so much. I know where you are. I know where you live.
I'll buy your house every morning with my dog.
And we'll be calling upon you. Appreciate it. The, for the next item, wow. I, I never, like I said publicly about four years ago, I never thought I would live to see a patio being built at Wellwood, much less what I'm seeing already. So Jeanie, talk to us about this project and what you're seeing in the pictures you sent us today.
Okay. Well, you skipped 7D, but we already talked about it.
Did I skip something? I'm sorry.
COVID updates, statistics, but we, we talked about that.
Are you sure? I'm sorry.
No, yeah, that, we, we covered it. It was good. So Wellwood patio, I know. Can't believe it. I think they just have a little bit of touch-up paint and stuff to do, but I, one moment. Make a note here about the sending email because I was going to do that. So the Wellwood patio, I just sent you an email from Ken Lyon. And it looks like it's almost done. I was going to share the pictures on, in your packet. Let me share my screen again if you don't mind. So the project started. Did I get? You seeing it? You got it? Dirt lot. So the project started in May and progressed really rapidly. As, as you can see, they, they worked quickly. That was the bobcat and they were doing the groundwork. They did a lot of underground water work and electrical. Then they laid out the grid for the concrete pouring in July and the tree planter and the protective wall around the air conditioners. And by the end of July, they had poured, the, the concrete was poured, the planters built. And mid-August, you see the tree, the feature tree is, is planted and the stone is protected. And then today, I'll share, let's see. Share a different screen. And stop sharing. Can you find the document?
You know, I'll bet, given the heat, that cement dried real fast.
Yeah. So let's see here, screen two. So Ken Lyon sent out an email. Can you see this document? The courtyard, we have, he did some side-by-side pictures from the Historical Society showing what it used to look like with the, with the planter and the feature tree. And then how it looks today. And a close-up picture of the planter. And then just some more cross views. This was in the 1980s. And then this is the new gate.
That looks amazing. I, compared to what I thought it was going to look like, that, that's, that just changes that so much.
Yeah. So this is the new ADA walkway and a little bench. The, the elevations are different. So they had to put in a little bench, like a little retainer wall, basically. So we have a new ADA sidewalk and the new gate. And we're working on a lock for either a keypad system or a locking system. So I, I like the gates. They're, they're very pretty. I don't think we have a picture of the other gate, but you can drive down Tackwoods and see it. So here's another view with the bugabia planted and the tree, the tree will grow. And that's another view of the patio. Now that, when we did this, we did, we didn't put any furniture in here. We figured we could do that later if it called for it. This planter wall was built so that it could be a seat. So there could be seating around there. And it was determined that the Ben &amp; Jerry's doesn't have outdoor seating permitted as part of their, their use permit. It's only indoor use only. So they, they are not going to put any patio furniture out either.
So they, they've been out there all along. We thought that they could legally be there, right?
Yeah, I don't, I, that's what I was. Yeah, I don't, I, that's what I was told. So this is a view of the building, the backside of Wellwood. When this was originally built in 1941, this was a back patio. And so this was, I think that the, the windows in the center were closed and that was the room that was closed in. But the other, the other areas, I believe, I know that they were side patios. I'm not sure about the center room. But then it was later closed in during some renovation. So, yeah, that was kind of a nice, nice side-by-side of some of those spaces. So look at the historic pictures. So we're almost done. I know, five years, can't believe it.
So what, what is the plan amongst it's, it's finished? I mean, is there going to be some sort of, I mean, I guess nothing now, but at some point, is there going to be a dedication of it? Or what, what will be the plan?
We don't have any plan right now. And because the building's closed, we don't have any plan to, as far as I know, to have it open to the public because there's nobody there to monitor it or open and close the gates. So we'll be ready when...
This is...
Do we have a furniture plan in the design?
There was no furniture decided on in that area. We decided to keep it open. So, and then it could just sit on the planter wall.
Well, I remember a discussion where we said that should someone want to have an event, we could put folding tables out there for a reception. We could put chairs out there if we wanted to have like a, a presentation of some kind. We would just move the furniture in and out, right, Jeannie? I don't know if that furniture still exists at Wellwood in the meeting room or not. Is that what we were thinking about putting out there, right? I think that was a discussion.
We, we could. We could do that. We have 48 chairs, I think 40 or 48 chairs for the meeting room. And then we could always rent furniture. And so that was the intention, was if we ever had any sort of events, we would just rent furniture and have it set up and, and then take it back down. Because you don't have any room to store anything. So, you know, we, we had discussed umbrellas and chairs and all sorts of different things and bringing things in and out. We just, we didn't have the, the space to store it and the resources.
A discussion around renting it out, right? If someone wanted to have an event, they could bring their own, you know, furniture or whatever they want from the event, correct?
Right. It's, it's a perfect event for, you know, a cocktail party, mixers, things like that because it's an even surface and a really nice enclosed space.
I'm sure Oscars would love to do an event there, right? I think we actually use their toilets to get for that space, right?
Yeah, the, the public restrooms are in that building.
Is there lighting for night events there?
I think, I, I know that there is lighting. That's one thing that they're not finished with because they had some light, lighting fixtures that were on back order. So the building has lighting, landscaping lighting. I don't think that there's special lighting, like, like you would light up a room, but that could always be brought in or with rentals. I know the library here, when they, when rentals have happened in here, they've been, they bring in special lighting. So that can, that could be something that's just added on.
Has somebody actually verified for you that the irrigation systems are working properly for the landscaping they've installed?
The plants died right away. There's a guarantee the, the plants have a, I mean, the landscape contract does require that they maintain the plants for a certain amount of time and...
I think it was a year.
I, I'm going to say 90 days, but...
Oh, was it much?
You might be right. But they planted the plants before the water was turned on and then the plants died. So then they had to replant it.
Oh, so you weren't kidding. I thought you were kidding at first when you said the plants died.
No, the plants died. A few, not everything. But when I did a walkthrough, there were some dead plants. So they were going to re-replace those.
We really should write a book about this project, you know?
It would be very long.
We would be just small chapters in a very long book. Trustee Cronin, there's your idea. You could write us a ghost book. So there, you know, you're smiling, but we call upon that, right?
It's the sequel to On Sunrise, At Sunrise.
Part two.
Sunset.
We'll call it Still at Sunrise.
The sun still hasn't risen yet.
Still waiting. Oh, this project will be done and I hope that we're not in lockdown someday where we can do that event. There's so many trustees in the past who would just love to be there. And see, there's been many trustees that have been on this project, right, Jeannie?
Yeah, I know. I'd like to do a little ribbon cutting or something, but I know the chamber's doing virtual ones. But it sure would be fun to do a nice in-person one.
All right. Thank you. On number eight, as I had mentioned, with the fact that we now have a full group, I'd like to revisit the committees and give those of us a chance who are assigned, if you'd like to move. But more importantly, to ask our two new members to select some committees. So Melissa, you can think about, if you have questions about the duties of those committees, I can share the documents that we have on those and just ask you to sign up for a committee and join someone. So.
I would love to. And that would be really helpful if you would send along the specific information.
Yeah, I'll reach out to Juanita as well. I'm sorry, excuse me, is that in your ears? I apologize. That was mine. So anybody else have any comments? I hope everyone had a nice break during the summer. So whatever you were able to do, but are you, are you still away, Dr. Borber? Are you still up? You were, you were away for a while.
Yeah, I'm still up in Big Bear. I come down to Palm Springs every two weeks for three days.
Yeah, that's why...
The weather appears...
That's why you're smiling. You're like, wonderful.
The weather's just great.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything? All right. All right. Great meeting, everyone. We covered a lot. As always, we cram so much into these meetings. I appreciate your commitment to your work and your service on this, this very important group. And I think that we have some decisions, once again, to make about the, the direction of the library. So please send your questions if you have anything. And if you'd like for me to invite the, the consultants for a portion of our meeting next time, I'm happy to have them there for pointed questions as follow-up. As a matter of fact, if I see some of those questions that I think they're better to answer, I'll invite them. And if you have anything for the city, I'd be more than happy to invite Dr. Reddy or the mayor to talk to us if we, if we have such questions for them as well. So I'm, I'm going to, if no further, Jeannie, are you waving us goodbye, Jeannie?
A move that we adjourn.
Thank you. Jeannie's waving us goodbye. So do I have a second?
No, sorry, the custodians just showed up.
Oh, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Talk, we'll be seeing you in a month and we'll be sharing information with you between now and then. So thank you, guys. Have a good evening, everyone.
All right, you too. Stay safe.
Thanks, everybody. Bye.